Oh my gosh, fashion and horror. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, December 1st. I call this meeting order at seven o'clock. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Elise, would you please call roll? Councilmember Hatfield?
Here.
Councilmember Benish?
Here.
Councilmember Shovelin?
Here.
Councilmember Grau?
Here.
Mayor Hubbard?
Here.
All right. That moves us along to adopting the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections on the agenda? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Benish. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, agenda is adopted. And that moves us along to visitor presentation. Does anybody in the crowd want that doesn't, that is not here for an agenda item, wish to speak towards the council? Do you want to come up and introduce yourself, or you want to just hang back? Okay, I won't put you on the spot today, but appreciate you being here. All right. Seeing that nobody's coming forward, we're going to move down on the agenda over to the approval of previous meeting minutes. So these city council minutes are from November 17th. Does anybody have any addition or corrections to the meeting minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve previous meeting minutes.
All right. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Benish.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Shovelin. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. And then that moves us along to our consent items. These are items that generally receive little to no discussion unless they need to be pulled off of the consent item, and they can certainly be added towards action items, or if someone has a quick comment or question.
I have a couple of quick questions. Seven A for Oak Ridge. Have we seen marked improvement on their safety plans? For their security of their building?
Yeah, well, yes. And there's, in this, it actually requires them to bring it up to the standards before we'll actually issue the temporary C O. So there's still things that have to occur, but once they do, then this would give us the ability to issue that C O.
Okay, perfect. And then?
And I will say typically, we don't bring these back because we, because there are standards that they have to meet to get a temporary C O. But we felt, especially since you guys have seen this one before, we wanted you guys to be aware sort of what, what was going on.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The other one is more just out of curiosity. Seven D, do we have an officer, like, ready to go for that?
Yeah, Hunter Panning.
So he won't be a school resource officer? Because isn't?
He'll be a school resource officer at the intermediate district. We have, we have Fernando is up there now with the I A A and will backfill somebody into the position up at the high school and then also shares through their middle schools. So we'll, as part of this whole transition, we'll also be promoting somebody else into an S R O position.
Okay, so that, that hasn't happened.
That hasn't happened yet, but Hunter is going to be the one that's permanently there. There'll probably be some transition stuff that we have there, but he'll be the one that's permanently there.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
I had one question on the Costco signing. Is, are they saying that they're going to share their parking lot with Oak Ridge?
You, I, I guess I'm not aware.
I can speak to that. So, I don't have a visual, but if you think of the site, there's a parking lot that is south of where Oak Ridge is located. It's kind of sandwiched between Oak Ridge and the Springs development. It's across the road from where Costco is.
Yep.
That's a shared lot. It currently is a shared lot, and that's part of that, part of how the approvals occurred for that whole development. The change that's being proposed here by the folks who are looking to operate Oak Ridge is that during the point of construction and completion of the main lot of, for Oak Ridge, which is located generally north of the building, that they would be able to use the entire shared lot with Costco during that time. Because while construction is occurring on that lot, on the main lot, it won't be accessible to the point that it is now, right? And so that would be kind of a temporary interim status. And that's something that they did talk to Costco about. That's why you have that attachment in your packet showing that interim parking agreement.
Makes sense. And then my only other question, I see the audit on the city from Clifton, Larson, Allen, which funny enough, I was an intern there during my M B A. But is that the audit firm we always have used?
It was the audit firm we used last year.
Okay.
So last year was our first year with it, first year, right? Yeah, first year with them, so this would be continuing that engagement.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Any other, any other questions? I had an opportunity to also talk to staff for seven A and just double checking that, you know, it was something that was kind of in the normal wheelhouse of what, like you had mentioned, Matt, that that's something that you guys, you know, have done. Just to make sure that they're kind of being along like everyone else, so being fair. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion for approval. Unless anybody has any other questions.
Motion to approve consent.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Grau. Any other discussion? Although, otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, consent is approved. And that moves us down to our action items. We just have one, big one, A A, truth and taxation public hearing, the 2026 tax levy and budget.
This is the one that's going to be really interesting.
Here you go.
All right. Well, tonight, obviously, we work throughout a good portion of the year getting to the point where we set our, our budget and our tax levy, because that's what sort of determines what are we going to do next year. And so it's a big part of what we do as part of our, our operations. I think we had our first work session back in June talking about this and have had work sessions and things since. Under the truth and taxation process, what ends up happening is we establish a preliminary levy that has to be done by the end of September. We provide that levy to the county, who then takes our levy along with every other local levy, puts it on a tax statement, sends it out to you. And most people, I think, probably got their tax statement about a week and a half ago or so, which indicates what everybody, what every local jurisdiction's tax levy is or is proposed to be.
You want to look at it?
Yeah. So, you know, has every, you know, tax levy what it's proposed to be, but then looks at the total impact of the taxes, what it changes from year to year, and then gives information on when the public hearing or the truth and taxation public hearing will be held, which is the public's opportunity to be able to come forward, hear what's being proposed, be able to ask questions, make comments, you know, things along that nature. We take no action tonight on the budget. It's purely to basically sort of lay out the, what's being proposed, take any comments that people may have. And then what we do is we then get feedback from you guys. We take that, and when we put together our final document for the budget, which we'll bring back at the December 15th meeting. And at the December 15th meeting, we'll end up doing sort of three things. We'll be setting the, the budget for each of our funds. So that's not just the general fund. The general fund is what we're focusing on tonight because it's the only one that has a tax levy associated with it. We also then set the tax levy. And then we also then, you know, for anything we haven't set rates yet for, for the upcoming year, for like utilities, things like that, we take the action to, to actually get those established. So again, this is information tonight and then action at the December 15th meeting. So, first slide, where we've been. So first thing we always look at is our objectives for budgeting. And these have not changed for some time. These are the things that we use to put together the budget document that you'll see or you're seeing before you now. So we want to support our mission of being the best small town in Minnesota and put our dollars towards those things that help achieve that. Maintain our existing high-quality service levels. Fully fund maintenance and replacement of vehicles, equipments, and physical assets on a regular schedule so that we don't get behind and up, you know, starting to stack things on top of each other. Fund new programs only after existing necessary programs are funded. Develop a long-term budget plan that's sustainable to support the service levels our residents expect. Fully fund the needs of our street reconstruction program and then budget utilizing a plan that avoids a drawdown on our city's general fund budget reserves. And on this one, based on feedback that we've received from our bond rating agencies, we've actually been working to build up that general fund reserve balance to get that to a strong position. Next slide is our tax levy policy. So this one was set back in 2015. Up until 2015, we had had a policy which basically established our tax levy based on keeping a constant tax rate. The thing that that didn't do, and we saw that really clearly through the recession period, when you started to see a retraction on values, is the cost of services went up, but if you followed a constant tax rate, your resources would go down. And so what we did is we established a tax levy policy that was really true to really what does it cost us to provide our services? So we limit tax levy growth to capture new growth in the community. So we want to make sure that new growth is paying for itself, that people in town aren't subsidizing new growth coming into town and expenditure inflation. We, we need to make sure that we're keeping up with inflation because things cost more from one year to the next. And only increasing the levy beyond that point if new service levels or assets or initiatives are being added. And like we've been talking about, this is the fourth year, the new thing that we added starting four years ago, and we've been building it up for four years, is our building, building fund initiative. And I put down here, capturing new growth does not really impact existing taxpayers. The, it actually helps. It actually helps add more tax base to be able to spread those costs against. And it also makes sure that new growth doesn't come into the community and doesn't contribute their fair share towards services, especially when we have to increase services when new people come into town. Next slide. So last year at this time, these are the things we were talking about. We were talking about our continued utilization of our tax levy policy, our continued implementation of our million-dollar capital asset maintenance plan. We were talking about our staffing study implementation being completed. So just last year at this time, we were talking about how that was the end of our staffing study, and we didn't have to continue to levy for that. We're talking about that being the third year of our four-year building improvement program that we started in 2023 and had done it in 23, 24, 25, and then 26. Obviously, it'll be the last year. And then continue to build our general fund reserves. And we added back in 2021, $300,000 annually to our budget to build reserves to a healthy level. And we increased our fund balance. In 2020, it was 1.9 million. We now have that up to close to $7 million after our last audit statement in 2024, which represents about 33% of our general fund budget. The target we want to hit is 40%. And really, it's about a cash flow issue. It's, we only get tax, we only get taxes remitted to us twice a year. We get them in December, and we get them in July. We don't get them monthly. And so 40% is really to carry you from a cash flow perspective throughout the, the course of the year. So where are we now? The slide you guys all hate. So the local government aid payments, we've talked about this before, that this is one that used to be very significant for us. We lost it in 2003, going into 2004. And by 2007, eight, we lost y'all together. Briefly made an appearance back in about 2014, 15, 16, and 17, and now we're at zero. And the reason I bring this up is one, you know, you know, the question comes up is, well, how did we get behind? How did we get behind on buildings? Or how did we get behind on staffing? A big reason we got behind is because we lost this local government aid that was coming to us from the state, and we didn't re-levy those dollars once that, once that aid went away. Part of the reason for that is a real good reason is the period that that L G A went away in 2003, four, five, and six were some of the highest building years that we had seen. So a lot of the new growth that we were seeing was sort of masking the fact that we were losing a million dollars a year. But once that, that growth went away, that million dollars meant something. It was a real impact in there. But I think the good thing is, is, you know, we, you know, after, you know, going through, completing our staffing study implementation, we really sort of gained back that million dollars. We really got ourselves back to where we should be and back to those staffing levels our staffing study had called for. Next one is population and household growth. This shows both where we're at and where we're going. So the 2024, which is the last population estimate that the Met Council has, is 29,830, which is 11,292 households. Obviously, the growth has continued pretty strong over the last year. And so we are most certainly over 30,000 people now. So we ultimately, you can see in 2040, we project that we'll be at about 36,000 people. That's probably pretty close to when we're going to peak out for, for land being developed. But we do expect that, you know, if we see household growth happen at the rate that we've been seeing it happen over the last almost decade, that, you know, by 2040, we probably are fully developed.
Does that mean even like high rises or new apartment buildings that would build on land available?
So what we'll end up seeing after full buildout is we'll start to see, I mean, you start thinking of suburbs are in closer, you know, where you see. Yes, Richfield is a big one. Richfield has the issue where they have people that never left their homes, and they couldn't attract new people into the community. And so their schools suffered because of that. And so, you know, we've been in this mode for 40 years of growing. Within the next 15 years, we're going to be in a mode of not growing. And that's how we handle no growth is very different than how we handle growth. And so, you know, what we'll see then is, is we'll probably see redevelopment projects. And that's where you'll start to see more high-dense projects like that.
But luckily for us, our school district encompasses areas that are still fastly growing like Carver and.
And, and that's a big deal because you think about Chan Assen. I mean, Chan Assen is almost fully developed. And so, I mean, they're not going to add much to their population. We'll add about another 6, 7,000 people. But Carver, you know, they're at 10,000, 10,000 now?
Yeah.
They'll, they'll add another 30,000 people. You know, if Victoria's at 10,000, they're going to add another 40,000 people. So, yeah, we sort of have the best of both worlds that will really, I mean, I think those communities have benefited from Carver and Chan Assen for years, being able to support the growth, to support the school district. And in the future, we're going to have to really depend on them to support the, the school district. But that, I mean, that, to get back to a community like Richfield, that's a problem. Like in Richfield, they were a school by themselves. And so they, you know, once they stopped growing, they're, you know, they didn't have the people coming into the school like they did before. Building permit revenue, we continue to see really high numbers of this. I, I mean, I remember back in the, you know, that '03, '04, '05 time period when we were right around a million dollars, and we really thought we were humming along at that point. And now I look at the permit numbers that we have compared back then, and, you know, obviously, 23 was our peak at about 3 million. But we're pretty consistently seeing about, you know, 1.5 to 2 million dollars a year in permit revenue, and that's coming in all sectors.
I think it's nice to see even how much of that is, like, adding on or, remodel's not the word, but maybe it is.
Yeah, no, it's, it's absolutely true. I mean, you look at the number of permits that we, that we issue, and yes, some of them are new construction, but there is a ton of permits that we give out for remodeling homes, for reinvesting into properties.
Yeah, reinvesting.
And so, I mean, that makes a huge difference in how we keep value in this community. So, you know, that's something that's, that, you know, really stands out. You know, and this, and again, we're seeing this from all sectors. We're not seeing it just from residential. We're not seeing it just from commercial or just from industrial. We're really sort of seeing a mixture of those types. I mean, right now, you know, obviously, we have housing that's going on up by your house and up by my house. We have Beckman Colter that's building a new industrial building up there. And, and in commercial, you know, we've seen, obviously, the Costco area just open up. And so we're, we're really seeing those, those types of developments in really all different sectors of the market. And I'll show you the breakdown in just a few minutes here of sort of what, where that's gone from a valuation perspective. So next slide shows where the market values are in the community from 2024 to 2025. If you look in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that it's 7.51% increase in overall market values in the community. And the thing that I think is interesting, and actually, I think really helps us from a tax perspective, is the fact that more than half of that growth is coming from new construction. So 4.1% of that growth is coming from new construction, and 3.41% is coming from, coming from existing homes increasing value. If you look at the residential column, which impacts the most people, you can see that about the percent, the average percent market change that people saw in their existing homes is about 3.95%. And then 2.83% of it came from, came from new construction. Commercial, industrial, we saw a 5.23% increase there. Apartments, we saw a 19.85% increase. And that's sort of the remaining valuation for all those units. We had 600-plus units that were added into the community, so we're seeing some of that come in. But 55% of the market growth is coming from new construction. Last year, it was 53%. So we're, we're definitely seeing more than half coming from new construction. And like I said, 4.1 of the 7.51 in total market value growth is coming from new construction. So again, that's helping shift more of the tax burden away from existing residents that, when we're seeing more new growth and, and increasing values from existing properties. So the next slide, this is where we see the breakdown. So we, you know, we have 75% of our community is, is residential. 15% of the valuation is from commercial, industrial. 8% is from apartment. And I say 2% is ag, but that's really sort of the undeveloped to, to future development property. But I, to me, the thing that stands out is in 2024, our commercial, industrial properties were at 9% of the total market value. Now they're at 15%. So we've seen a pretty decent increase in industrial growth within the community. And some of that is also like Costco and things like that.
Right.
So again, this just means that more of that burden's being shifted away from the residential properties in the community. And we really expect this to continue for, you know, some time. So I know we're talking about our last year of our building program, but next year, we won't have that. And if we continue to see this type of activity and we don't have that program we're having to pay for, that's just going to, you know, have all that much more impact, positive impact on, on taxpayers. So the market value history, you can see sort of where we've been. The, I go back to 2009 because that's the recession. And you can see how we went. I think it's the first time probably in Chaska's history we went backwards in valuations. And it took us from 2009 to 2015 before we actually. And it took us from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen before we actually built back up the valuation that we lost in the community during the recession. So, I mean, I don't know, that time flew by to me, but that's a long time. I mean, that's six years it took to rebuild back, just get back to where we were. But since that time period, you can see what's happened with property values. We all remember two thousand twenty-two values, that's when.
That's fun.
That was not a fun time. But, but that's, that's sort of what we saw with valuations in community, and we just continue to see those go up.
That's twenty-two?
Twenty-two for twenty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it was our first year of our building program.
It was all at the same time.
It was really great if you were selling your house because your house went up in value, but again, the shock on the proposed tax values was huge because people's values went up, which.
The values went up and then we were implementing this. We had some really in-depth conversations. Yeah, I think that's the year I cried at Facebook.
Yeah, that, that one was not a fun year.
No.
But then if you look, it's steadily risen since.
Yeah.
On that graph, it's very steady.
Which is, you know, more controlled growth is better than just, you know, like.
And, and one of the things that happened, and I think COVID had something to do with it, is there was a lot of people that made moves during COVID.
Yeah, well, they decided they didn't need to live in the city anymore and became, well, I mean, it was the, you know, the.
The commute went away.
Well, and technology kind of changed that sort of thinking, so.
Yep. And, and what it did is it put a huge demand on housing.
Yeah.
And that, and it, the county, I, I sort of felt bad for the county because it happened all at once. And they, and if they wouldn't have caught up, they never would have caught up. So it's, so they almost really needed to take that. But the next slide really shows, this is new construction value increase. So just giving you a, you know, a sense of how much new construction has impacted our growth in, you know, two thousand twenty-five especially. But I also put this in here as a reminder that even during the recession, back in two thousand ten, I have in year eleven, it, it was smaller, but we still saw growth in the community even during the recession. And we looked at this in particular back in two thousand fourteen and fifteen when we were changing the tax levy policy. You know, to, to have the discussion about even though valuations were going down, new peop- new people were still moving in, and so it meant that it was, it was costing us more to provide services even though valuations were going down. So we, we have not seen a year that didn't see some type of new construction value increase probably for forty years. So next slide is showing the transfer we make from the electric fund into the general fund. And this is sort of a two, sort of two pieces of this. Five percent of this is the right-of-way fee to match up with what we charge Minnesota Valley and Excel. It was the action you guys took earlier this year. It's also called a franchise fee. So that matches up. So when you look, if you look on your bill, whether you're Chaska Electric, Minnesota Valley or Excel, everybody has the exact same right-of-way fee. The other five percent, because we've always made a ten percent transfer into the general fund to help reduce taxes, one of the benefits of having an electric fund is to help, you know, keep taxes down, is that the other five percent ends up being a transfer we make directly into the, into the general fund to help, you know, mitigate, you know, the cost of increasing services and try to keep our taxes down as much as possible. And that's something that started back in the mid-eighties and has really gone sort of from that point forward. But you can see, I think the other thing this illustrates is if this is ten percent of our electric sales, this shows you what, how much our electric sales have increased.
Yeah.
So you can see back in two thousand eight, we were at two million dollars, we're at over five million dollars for two thousand twenty-six, which means that we've more than doubled the amount of electricity that we're selling in the community. So the next one is talking about key environmental factors that we look at. Obviously, population and households, they're increasing, and we continue to expect, anticipate approved projects coming online. So we know for certain, we see High Point Vista is doing sort of their development stuff out there now. Fulton Wood, which is just across sixty-one, is doing it at the same time. So we, and then we know that they're, the Holosic property that's across from our park, they have now come in with a developer, so we know that they're going to be coming to us pretty soon saying that they want to develop that. So residential is going to continue.
Which is good.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the, you know, the other one we're starting to get some interest in is developers interested up on McKnight Road. So that's, you know, something that, you know, the first time we ever talked about it, it seemed like a long ways away and now it's sort of.
Where, on McKnight Road?
So.
The new, second being repaved, you know.
Yeah. So south of the Arboretum and north of McKnight Park.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I always forget that that's there.
Hold the bridge, get fixed.
Yeah. Development, so permits have continued to outpace our budget. We continue to have development interests and two industrial buildings are under construction in two thousand twenty-six with the concept plan for the Big Woods Industrial Park is going to be coming forward. And they do have an end user for one building right now. So I would expect that they, I mean, they're not going to, they're going to want to get to a point of having footings and foundations by sometimes late, later in the summer next year. So we'll start to see that develop. And then market values have continued to see increases. You know, new, new growth has outpaced increases on existing properties. And again, the good thing with that is that helps shift some of that tax burden away from existing residents. So where are we going for two thousand twenty-six? So we're only talking about three things for two thousand twenty-six. Continued utilization of our tax levy policy, continued implementation of our camp program, and then the last year of our building improvement program, which will be very nice to just have it done. So first one, first item, the operational tax levy policy. So again, we look at setting the levy based on factors impacting the cost of services. So expenditure inflation is the first one. So the, you know, cost of providing the same services increases. Three point four four percent is the inflation number that, that we're using. This, this number is hard because it's actually, it's a little light because our cost of getting some of these things have actually increased faster than inflation. And it's based because, it's based mainly for product, it's based on availability. For people, it's based on availability, you know, that there's more demand for, there's less people who are applying for jobs. And so, you know, keeping up with that. And then new growth, new growth comes right from that chart that we got from the county. It represents four point one zero percent. So expenditure inflation plus new growth equals the, the tax levy increase, which would be seven point five four percent. So if we weren't doing the building program, our, the percent increase would, we would see would be seven point five four percent. And because new growth has outpaced growth in existing property values, this, you know, decreases the impact on existing properties. The impact to a median value home would be six point oh seven percent increase or seven dollars and eight cents per month, eighty-five dollars annually for our operational levy. So that difference between the seven point five four percent increase in the levy and the impact of six point oh seven, that's the, that's where new growth impacts. We're able to spread that out more. And then again, under our policy, any additional tax levy occurs only if there's a new program or service being implemented. So again, this would be the fourth of four years of the building improvement program. That would add an additional one million, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to the overall tax levy. So for our camp program, so the purpose of this program is to maintain our existing assets, to keep them in good conditions. So the types of things, these, the camp program is probably our most popular program we have because it makes immediate impacts on places. So new playgrounds, repaving roads, doing trail resurfacing, you know, rehabilitating city parking lots or retaining walls, there's all kinds of things that we just need to make sure that we're maintaining. The, one thing that we are budgeting in this year is when we set up this program back in two thousand seventeen, we set up as a million dollars a year. What we didn't do is we didn't like increase it by inflation each year, and what we're doing is we're starting to fall behind. So from this point forward, we, we have a program in where, you know, we would increase it by the rate of inflation, the same inflation we use it with the tax levy, to make sure that we can afford to do the same amount of projects each year. So for instance, it's more expensive to do an overlay of a street than it was in the past, so. And this next slide shows our proposed, we only have two things in two thousand twenty-six. We are going to repave Bavaria Road going from the Victoria border all the way down to basically the railroad tracks. I have personally heard many comments about why we didn't do this this year. So people are very anxious to see us do this project. So it's, it's, it is well-needed, well-deserved. But then we also each year do sixty thousand dollars of trail resurfacing and sixty thousand, it's basically twenty thousand dollars a mile. And so we, we do three miles of, of trail resurfacing. We have right around seventy-five to eighty miles of trails within our system that we need to maintain. And so if we do three miles each year, we basically are able to keep, keep it on sort of a twenty-year rotation, which is about right for, for a trail. Two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight sort of shows what we're going to be focusing on. Maybe the only thing I'll just focus on twenty-seven is point out that we're doing less in twenty-seven from a monetary perspective. That's because we're putting more into twenty-six because it, it would not make sense for us to break Bavaria Road in half. We really need to do that in one, just follow swoop and just get it done. But then that means in, in twenty-seven, we'll do a bit, a little bit less in, we'll still do stuff, but a little bit less to balance it out between the two years of the programs.
Out of curiosity, for that twenty thousand dollars a mile sounds like a lot, it probably really isn't when you think about driveways and stuff, but is it totally removing what's there or is it just resurfacing the existing?
So they mill what's there. So basically it takes the top layer of the, of the surface off and then they repave it. And actually, if, it's twenty thousand dollar, or, yeah, twenty thousand dollars per mile because we do it in-house. If we were to, if we were to.
More?
Yeah, if we were to, you could probably expect it's at least twice as much, if not more, if we were to hire it out.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess probably the.
Including the playgrounds.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably the best place to, to see this year where they did it was right along Bavaria Road, sort of in front of Bountiful Baskets. They, they did it there. It's, it gives you a sort of a sense of what they do there.
Okay.
A little bit more visible.
I mean, I guess we just got estimates on driveway and it's eight thousand dollars through, it's just a small driveway, so I can, I guess I can see where it's a mile long, yeah.
Yep. All right, the building improvement program. I think you guys are probably well aware of the history of that, you know, that, that it has been a strategic priority of this council since two thousand twenty-two. And, and that's also when we did a citizen focus group and sort of started the process. And obviously since then, I've done a lot of engagement type of things going out there and, and talking about, and now it's, it's pretty hard for people not to know that there's that program going on because we've, I think we've talked about it a lot.
Well, and we have one building that's almost.
They say that's very visible.
It's very visible, so, yeah. And, you know, we just had it with Chaska today, just came out, what, a week ago or whatever, and we had it in there too, so.
Yeah.
Just continuing to try to get the message out. And obviously they'll continue, because this is obviously the end of raising the dollars to do it. We still have how many years of building left to actually do?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Next slide, the priorities. Obviously, public safety was priority number one, and that will have completed within about a month, so we're really close. Municipal service building, within about a month and a half, we'll have the bids and, and, or the.
From the ground?
The specs, the put-together construction documents. We'll go out to bid sometime in mid-January, get that back probably in mid-February, and we'd like to be in a position by the beginning of March of actually entering into a contract with a contractor to, to move forward with that and then start in May. Library is the priority number three. City Hall would probably be priority number three, but we really need to get rid of the library to deal with City Hall. But library, that's one that we're going to be starting shortly, sort of the, sort of the public process of, of doing that. And we've already sort of started the process of talking with the county about, you know, we have to build it, but they have to operate it. And so.
I was just going to say, people might fight you on the library being number four priority. There are a lot of people in this community that felt like that should be number one.
Yeah, I know, that's fair.
But it, it is ranked appropriately in there, I think, so.
Yep, it's fair. The, but this is one that, I actually, I actually think this is going to be the toughest one to implement because it's not just us, it's the county too that we have to, to work with on that.
Otherwise they get no say.
What's that?
Then they should have to pay, otherwise they get no say.
Yeah, it's.
You have that conversation, let me know how it goes.
That, it's.
Lisa Anderson and I are going out next week, so we'll have that conversation.
There we go. So, you know, so that, that will be priority number three. We will start in two thousand twenty-six a public process for that, so more to come on that. And then City Hall, obviously that's more of an internal type of thing, but, and we're not, the great thing I think about the City Hall space is the way we've sort of staged this and set this up, we will not have to add on to this building. We can, we can renovate this building, you know, put back in conference room spaces and things that we're just missing now. We use card tables out here all the time for meetings, and so, you know, having actual meeting room space will be, be nice, but that, that'll be the, the priority number four. And then the next slide just sort of goes through and sort of talks about the dates. So you can see the last project, City Hall remodeling, we would anticipate two thousand thirty is when we'd actually start that project, and then we talked about everything in between. So this is a total cost of the building improvement program, so almost a hundred and twenty million dollars. And you can see the contributions, the tax levy is a majority of the contribution going into that, but the utility funds also contribute primarily because the utility funds, like with the municipal service building, that's a good portion of that, well, it's three quarters of that building is, is utilities. But we also have things like utility billing here that is part of utilities, and so contributing that to make sure that each fund is contributing the, the fair share. And then the next slide, I, I feel good about this, this slide because I think it sort of shows where we started and where we ended. You know, now we know, you know, now we know exactly where we're going to end and, you know, we anticipated on the left that when we ended this program, we'd be at thirty-four dollars per month as a total impact to a resident for this program. And we see that where we actually ended up was at thirty dollars and fifty cents per month. So, you know, a lot of that came through growth that happened during that time period. But, you know, we, we definitely were able to perform better than what we had anticipated when we started this program. Just a couple of other notable items here. The public safety funds, we've talked about this before, we received in late two thousand The, we received about one point two million dollars and. And I still have this in here because we still haven't spent all those dollars. And we're finishing up all the FFNE for the public safety building with these dollars. So that, it couldn't have come at a better time for us to be able to really contribute and make sure that we're able to get the things that we really wanted to be able to get in the, the public safety building. But the one down below is one that continues. So the legislature in 2023 did a metrowide sales tax of 1%. 0.25% of that goes towards creating affordable housing and that's given directly to communities. We received $339,000 this year. We'll receive about $345,000 next year. And then we can expect that that will be getting that every year. And what, what we've been doing so far has been, have been using these dollars to contribute towards community land trust projects where we can create permanent affordability with homes. And it's sort of interesting. I, I was reading in the Star Tribune yesterday, I think it was, they had an article on land trusts and how they felt that they were the only real tool out there that was able to create and maintain affordability in housing. Which is interesting because I've never seen an article done on that before, you know, talking about that. But that's how we've been utilizing those dollars, is, is putting it in, you know, working with the CDA who runs the land trust program and then helping provide those dollars. And then they provide dollars too. And, and then, you know, slowly but surely, we create more permanent affordable houses around the community. This one we already talked about. We did obviously set up the franchise fee with this last year. So we'll see that impacted in the budget this year as far as new revenue coming in from Excel and from Minnesota Valley. One of the things that, that we're working on right now is actually taking over Excel's territory. So, you know, if we take it over, then we're getting, if we take that over, then obviously we're the ones providing the electricity. And so, you know, then we deal with it like we do the rest of the community. We continue to have discussions with Minnesota Valley. 2040 is the agreement we have with them when we can take over the territory that's out basically where the Big Woods Industrial Park will be. That's going to be important for us, I think, to have in the, in the future to serve. We'd love to be able to find a way to purchase it sooner than 2040. I'm not sure that they're going to agree to that, but that's going to be something we continue to, to work on. So as far as the actual budget additions for this year.
I just ask a question on that Minnesota Valley, and maybe I missed it a couple of weeks ago. But how do they actually have, was that one time that not Chaska, so through annexation or whatever?
Yep, so we annexed that area. It used to be Chaska Township. So we had everything that was within Chaska.
Okay.
But we didn't have everything that was in the townships outside that was going to become Chaska. So they, they had that territory years and years ago. But that particular land was actually a swap that was done back in the, I don't know, late eighties, where they had, if you know where Michael's Foods and the, there's a data center where Integris used to be. That all used to be in Minnesota Valley's territory. And so there was a swap that was done with the territories to pick up that. And then, and then they kept that till 2040.
Because it seems like with the industrial going in there, that would be a big electric
Oh, for sure.
Which would make a lot of money, but, yeah, makes sense.
For sure. So as far as the newer budget additions that we fit in based on our, our policy here and, and on growth. First of all, we, in communications, we have $74,000 to produce and mail six additions to Chaska today. So we've already sent out two so far and we've gotten really good reviews from that so far. And then we have $10,000 in there for, we need to move to a new website provider. So we'll be doing that work next year. In administration and human resources, we're currently in the process of completing a compensation study. We put $385,000 into the budget to be able to implement any recommendations that come out of that. We don't know that we'll use that. You know, if, you know, if everybody came in on market, then, you know, we wouldn't have to use any of that. But we anticipate that there's going to be some positions there outside of market. So it's, it's put in there to be able to have some resources to be able to, to be able to draw on for that. And then there's, you know, a couple sort of smaller items. We have, we're trying to move to all electronic type of systems instead of, instead of all manual.
Instead of me running down to City Hall.
So you run down to City Hall. Trying to be a little bit more up to date on that. And then we, we have additional required safety training now that's required from OSHA. And so we have to up our contract with SafeSure to be able to provide that training. And then we have a management analyst position that's built in that would start on July 1st. And this would be a position that would be more professional support services to engineering, community development, and administration. We have a lot of things that are just bogging down the work, especially in the engineering department, you know, development agreements that they, they take a long time to, to develop. And, or, you know, processing, these all sound like stupid things, but processing payments like with MINDOT when we're getting reimbursed for Highway 41 project, these are all super time consuming type of things. We need to have somebody that has professional level experience to be able to, to do it. Doesn't need to have a lot of experience coming in. But I fear that if we don't add something like that, that we are going to burn some people.
Been buried in
Yes, it's just, yep. Police, we have our officer number 32, which would start on July 1st. We have the co-responder slash social worker that would start on July 1st. And then we have just some smaller things. We have to, making sure that we go through wellness screenings for our officers on a regular basis. We want to bring on two more people to train or onboard into our SWAT operations. So our SWAT, we actually are in a consortium with multiple cities. And so we don't have to provide the equipment. We provide the people that are trained if there's incidents that pop up. And then some operational costs with our new detention center. To me, the most significant thing that we're adding, and this is coming with our public safety building opening, is in fire, adding an overnight duty crew for 24/7 coverage.
It's going to be huge though.
It's, I mean, the amount of
Two fires in the last month?
Three.
Three.
And, and, you know, and five minutes is like, is a real critical time.
Yeah, isn't it? Fire doubles every minute?
Well, and quite frankly, more often that, heart issues or strokes or things like that. You know, when they're having to respond to the station and then go out to a call, you know, now they're going to be responding directly from the station 24/7. It's going to, I think it's going to significantly impact our positive outcomes that come.
I also think it's a good recruitment tool. You know, fire departments are all struggling.
Yeah.
You know, and having this be something that is a schedule, that, you know, you don't, you don't have to, you know, plan your life around it, you know, like, you know, the paid on-call model. You know, it's just a different world now, so.
And that living, whatever you call it, or dorm thing that's in the public safety is beautiful. Like, that's a draw.
Yeah, and it's a place, I mean, all these people have other jobs. And so it gives, it gives them the ability, you know, to sign up for a shift, go in. You know, if they're there, they can work on work. You know, they, they can do what they need to do for the rest of their life, but still be there to, to take care of services. So I
Is there no way when medical calls come in like that, just to route them to ambulance or EMTs?
The, so one of the challenges with, with EMTs is that they're not always within our community.
They flow, sure.
They flow.
Called system status management. You need to move your trucks to wherever, depending on how many trucks you have available at that certain time is where your coverage is. And there might not be a truck in Chaska all the time. The calls do get routed to Ridgeview's medical dispatchers. And then the closest ambulance does get sent, but it may still come from another community. It might come from another service. We've done mutual aid for Ridgeview before with Hennepin County because we come in from Eden Prairie and Glen Lake sometimes and Minnetoka. And they'll, vice versa, they'll do mutual aid for us and come into Eden Prairie, Minnetoka, Shoreview, you know, those, those areas. But yeah, it's, you're, you're never guaranteed to have an ambulance five minutes away. I mean, that's why a duty crew who is five minutes away can start the processes of helping somebody.
I guess, and this is probably very naive, I always thought an ambulance was always up at either the 212 Medical Center or the fire station.
No, they're, they very rarely are at those places. The, you know, typically what we saw in the past, you know, especially when people had to go to the station, is the first people there were the police. And, you know, and then it was fire and then it was ambulance. Now we're sort of seeing police and fire come at about the same time. And then if the ambulance is close, then they'll come at the same time. If they're out of, you know, out of, you know, coming from a different area, then they might come last. But the key is starting the processes. And then once those processes are started, then the EMTs can take over, paramedics can take over when, when they actually show up on scene.
I'd like to point out too that this is a very cost-effective transition in the sense, you know, if you were going to go full-time, I mean, there is, that is a huge cost to that. And, and that, that's all dependent on, you know, there are communities that have to do that because of their size and, and scope and layout. But, you know, these, this issue, this single issue over emergency services, this is an issue that is talked about, I think, I mean, within the four mayors and our, you know, within our school district, the three of us or the four of us talk about this constantly. But all their just mayors across the, the state or metro area, I mean, this is the number one thing that, you know, people are talking about.
Like when I go to ICMA conference every year, this is an issue nationwide. And it's an issue worldwide. I mean, it, this is an issue everywhere. And it's only going to get worse because
Population.
Aging population and
Driving cars.
And, well, and people, and people live a different type of lifestyle than in the past. I mean, in the past, I mean, you think about these people who were on the fire department for years that responded whenever the bell rang. It's harder to recruit people for that now. And it's not, honestly, I don't think it's fair to ask them to do that either.
Yeah, you give up your life when you're on.
When, when there's a different model that we can provide that's cost-effective.
Yeah, this is a bridge to, to get that and to be able to have that. So that's, I just wanted to point that out.
That's, that's very good.
We do have an addition of administrative assistant for July 1st. And one of the reasons we put this as July 1st is we sort of want to see how traffic works in the building before we actually make any moves. Maybe we don't need it. You know, it's, we, we, you know, that's sort of the way Stevens approached this, is to say, I think we're going to need it and let's budget it for July 1st, but let's see how things work. Let's see how, how the building functions and, and how people utilize it.
Would this person float between both, both, oh no, just on fire?
Yeah, no, we, we definitely would have to have somebody on the police side, for sure.
Answer my own questions.
Yeah, the police side, for sure, we need somebody there. The fireside, we think we do, but he's just going to sort of, sort of see how it works. We have some additional supplies for gear. And actually, this is, this is for new firefighters we have coming on, but it's actually because the gear has actually increased in cost so much that, that we had to increase that. And then really sort of implementing a more robust wellness program for our firefighters. And then building inspections, we do have a building tech, permit tech position. Really, we could use a full-time now, but they were hired on as part-time, but they're retiring this year. And so this is a good time for us to transition to a full-time. And then we, we budget for an intern in the Parks Department in the summer. And really, that ends up being the person who gets to run most of the programs for, for the summer, you know, when they're on, you know, nights and weekends and, you know, that's, that's a good job for an intern. So, yeah. All right. And then I, I won't go through all these, but this, this shows all the different vehicles. We have a schedule for our vehicles. And so like plows are 20 years and trucks are 10 years. And, and so we have a schedule that we have in place for, for when things get, get replaced. And we like to try to make sure that we replace them on time because they can start to cost more to maintain than to get a new one if you keep them past that time period. So you can show, there's a couple of slides here that
How are you getting an unmarked car for $35,000? That's so cheap.
So we get them through a state contract. So we can get them directly through there without having to go out for bids. So we know exactly what we pay for them.
Really?
Yeah.
Also costs a lot less to have an unmarked car than it is to
Yeah.
Put everything on a marked vehicle.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of equipment that goes into the squads.
But even like a basic Ford Explorer, which are what a lot of squad cars are, are 60, 70, 80 if you go buy them for yourself. Yeah, true.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have a lot of the bells and whistles.
Speaking of marked, again, the plan of the re, the rap
Yep.
Is as they're replaced.
As they're replaced. So as they're replaced, we're going to that white stripe around. And I, I, I don't know if you remember when Ryan came in and talked about this, but the reason for that is so often we'd have people say, we never see police officers in our neighborhood. And we'll say, well, we did go through your neighborhood because the cars before, when they're just black, they're sort of
Like any other car.
Like any other car.
And there's a lot of studies that show visible policing as a benefit to communities.
Yes. And so, you know, you know, Ryan said, I want, I want people to know this is a police car going through their neighborhood so that they know that we're making those patrol cars.
The sheriff is a white. County sheriffs are white.
Yep. All right. So this one gets to the actual impact. So again, the 2026 general and EDA levy would be $23,995,562. So that's, the levy itself is an increase of 14.06%, but because of growth, that's not the actual impact to homes. So the median value home in 2024 was $390,000. So that meant in 2025, that house would have paid $1,533 in taxes for the year. The median value in 2025 is $410,400. So that means the city taxes payable in 2026 would be $1,705. So that's an increase of $172 per year or $1,433 per month, where that's an 11.22% increase. So you can see the difference between what our levy increase and what the impact is, is really based on that new growth. And then I also broke it down too to show you just what goes to the building program and what goes to the baseline. So the baseline represents $85 of that cost and the building, building program represents $87 of that cost. And just to give you a sense, I mean, I've been sort of asking people around sort of what, where are they at? I was at 4.5% increase. I generally were seeing people anywhere between four and a half to say six and a half percent as being sort of the general increases. I'm looking at one right here for 0.933% increase. I won't say who it is, but, but it's, I'd say generally, people have been in sort of that four and a half to six and a half percent increase for their taxes. Anybody who's been above that, what I've noticed is that their valuation, their house increased more.
That's what I saw. When I took out, when I considered the valuation of my home, went up. I think my home value went up like nine percent. My taxes went up 10 point something percent. So all things considered, the impact, had my home value not changed, would have been something like one point, whatever. But because my home value went up that almost 10%, there was more of impact. And that's kind of what I'd seen and heard when talking to others too, is their home value went up. But I think that is kind of a testament too to like capturing growth in a But I think that is kind of a testament too, to like capturing growth in a community and how important timing of these are. Because that's been my takeaway of sitting through this presentation now for seven years and really like looking at these numbers and how it impacts people. And it's, you know, a lot of people have said, wait with the building program. And I kind of shudder to think of what that would actually cost, not just in inflation, but in not being able to capture this growth. And we would all be seeing definite double digits on our tax statements if we continue to push this off. So I, the, being able to capture the growth we're seeing right now was so huge. And I see that on my proposed tax statement when I get it and even the, you know, capturing the value of my home's increase in it. So.
And I think a couple of years ago, we had really high, it might have even been last year because I came in and told Mark Gwynchittle that I thought my taxes went up too much. So I do think like depending on the value of your home or where your home was located or whatever, it may have hit different years. But also what he told me last year, and you know, it really was true, is that for so many years, your taxes didn't go up in the city because we tried everything not to. That we're kind of playing catch-up and that really made a lot of sense because ten years ago, we barely saw them go up. So.
Well, we went through a time period for two thousand nine, ten, eleven, and twelve where we didn't increase the tax levy at all.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what he was telling me last year when I came to this exact meeting to complain was that.
But that was, it was mainly, that was mainly due just to recognize that there was a recession going on and not increase it. But yeah, no, I, I, that's generally what I've sort of seen across the board. I know I talked to Noel, you were about the same in, in yours. And just been asking friends. And I think that's generally about what, what people are seeing. Next slide, just again, sort of breaks down sort of where your, your tax dollar is going. It's, it's relatively an even split between, there's a little bit more that goes to schools, but generally.
That's the increase that's not on your proposed tax statement, is that levy you got passed.
Yes, the one thing that's not on there is the referendum is not on the tax statement. Yep. And then the next slide shows the, this shows how we've sort of built up our building program. So the, the orange represents our baseline services. And the, the red represents the increases that we've seen with the building program that have gone on. And then next slide shows where we show up for tax levy per capita. So we are fifty-three out of eighty-four cities. So that's at sixty, that puts sixty-three percent of the cities lower than, than, higher than us. We actually had an opportunity, Elise found this last week, and we've never got this before. But the state actually sent out everybody's proposed levies for twenty-six so that we could do sort of a comparison. If you remember when we started this whole program, I had sort of thought that we'd, we'd end up at about forty-four. Yeah, I said I thought we'd end up at forty-four, Lois. We're gonna be at about fifty or fifty-one. So, which means that we're gonna be better than median.
On the back of that statement, there's one that shows the current cities around.
Yep, all the cities and townships. Yep. But we, we should end up at about fifty or fifty-one on the, the list. So better than median. And, and again, which makes sense because it, we performed better than we thought we would have with the, with the building program too. And then this shows basically just sort of a breakdown of the major revenues that go into each fund. So property taxes make up seventeen percent. Or, I'm sorry, seventeen percent increase. No, seventeen percent increase is seventeen percent increase into the general fund. We also use the tax levy in our equipment acquisition fund too. So that doesn't mean that our tax levy went up seventeen percent. It just means that's how the percent increase that went into our general fund. So less is going into our equipment acquisition. We see the increase, electric and gas franchise fees have gone up by thirteen percent, and that's based just on growth. Licenses and permits, you know, we've seen, obviously seen an increase in there. We have admin charges to the funds. So each one of our funds, so instead of, like, if you go over to Shakopee Public Utilities, they have their own payroll person, their own finance person that, you know, and a lot of utilities will have, or a lot of different funds will have their own sort of administrative structure that goes with. So for us, what we do instead of having that is we have the funds pay the general fund to pay for my services, pay for Noel's services, pay for Elisa's services because we provide payroll. Payroll pays, provides it to everybody. So we basically charge a fee to our funds to be able to support the services. Because we put all of our administrative service functions within the general fund.
Makes sense.
And then the next slide's gonna be way too hard to see. I can barely even see it.
Everyone has to see if they can list off what the snow removal costs.
Yeah, I mean, this, this breaks, this is actually, if you look in your packet that I gave you. That chart is a lot easier to read on that. But basically just some of the things that, you know, I put in here that I haven't talked about. One is in community development. We did put in some dollars for updating the downtown master plan. So that's in there. We put in dollars, obviously, we've talked about building up the fund balance, so putting in unallocated dollars.
I did have a question. Why are we doing the school district's maintenance if they're their own, if they're already getting taxed out?
So they pay us for it. So, yep, so they contract us to do it. And, and honestly, I wish that they would contract us to do all of it. Because, you know, we always sort of, you know, talk about it, you know, they're really good at educating kids. We're really good at growing grass. And so, so it's. Everybody has their strengths. And I honestly think that it would be, and I've talked with other administrators about this too. I honestly think it would be better if cities actually did the maintenance for the school district grounds and fields and things like that. We definitely, we don't do everything. We do sort of the big things for them. They do all the mowing still. But we do all the, you know, fertilizing, aeration, those types of things. But, but we, we actually get compensated for that.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just always wondering that.
And then maybe just one other thing. So we continue to shift some of those park and rec, true park and rec costs out of the community center fund and into the general fund where you typically see them. So we haven't done it all at once because we can't afford to do it all at once, but we've tried to as we can. Continue to try to move more of those true park and rec services out so that the community center can truly start to take care of itself and not park and rec too. Then the next slide. So you've completed three of these boxes. And we only have one more box to complete. So obviously, we've, we've done everything, had the truth of taxation hearing. And then December fifteenth is when we would establish the budgets for, for everything as long, as well as the levies. So that's it.
All right. Um, thank you.
And we do have to.
Have a public hearing, right?
Yes.
All right.
So officer, whatever, and you have a lot to say about that.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Matt, for the presentation. I know for, like you had mentioned, this is not our first time seeing this. But this tonight, I feel like we, we should each take a moment to kind of talk about our thoughts and feelings as far as the upcoming budget as council members. Just because it's, probably the reason why we sit up here and make these decisions, right? And then also have the public hearing as well. So should I, should, I mean, this is my first.
I do the public hearing first.
Okay, let's, let's open the public hearing at eight fourteen. Does anybody from the public wish to, to engage? We have a community member from Chen Hassan here, so he's probably not gonna engage too hard on us, right? But, uh, yeah, I don't see.
Probably make sure there's nobody on line two.
Okay. Krista, is there anybody on Zoom? I didn't know where. Okay, I was like, I didn't know where. All right, that's good to know. All right, so I'm gonna close the public hearing at E fifteen just because there is nobody in the audience that is here to wish to it, to speak to it. Which I think kind of lends to, Matt, your point of like looking at the truth and, or looking at the tax statements, knowing that, kind of where they range and fall. And then this is our fourth year of this building program. So, uh, does anybody wanna kick off our thoughts and feelings part of this reflection of our two thousand twenty-six budget?
I can start, Mayor, sure.
All right.
You know, I think the, the piece that I will speak to is the building piece. That is obviously the bigger piece of it. Almost equal. But that is kind of the above and beyond piece that we've taken on. And I will say that, you know, someday I will not be sitting up here. That is a true statement. But there will be something I am proud of and is really supporting that program from its inception. You know, I, I do really think, I was just talking to someone the other day. It's like, you know, if anyone really questioned, actually, it was an officer, actually. It was just like, you know, it's funny because it's like, if anyone ever really, you know, early on questioned that, the best tool was like, just go tour the police. And you tell me that we don't need to do this, right? Like, that to me still was the most obvious thing ever. There's lots of other good sta, stuff happening which we needed to do. But that to me, like, that moment when we toured that space, because I was naive, right? Come this building, space is down there, right? You know, so I appreciate that. And so I'm proud of that. I've also taken the approach that I will never minimize what that percent number means to person because it means different for everyone, right? For some, that's like, yep, okay, great. Others, that's on fixed incomes, that, that's money that they weren't planning on having to spend. So I understand that. I appreciate that. And I, you know, we never take that decision lightly. In next meeting, we're gonna vote on this. I will, I, I will never take that decision lightly as well, knowing that I, you know, voting to add a cost to everyone, right? To be, to be frank. But it's, I do look and say, you know, when people choose to live in communities, they do look at tax, right? Won't underestimate that. But they also will look at services, right? People want to know that we take care of the most important people in our, in our, in our city, police and fire, right? I think they rank up there as some of the most important people in a community because when, that, you need them, they're there for you, right? And that is important. You think of protecting assets, you know, we need to have snowplows, we need to have trucks. And does it make a lot of sense to have those sit outside and then they depreciate faster and taking good stewards of mine? No, the answer's no, right? So you look at the, the, the public, the, you know, MSB building. City Hall speaks for itself, right? We've talked about the space and everything like that. You know, and then the library, right? I, I always talk about the library because I may have been early in my life here in Chaska naive of understanding what the importance of libraries were because like I.
More than just books.
A hundred percent, right? And I've learned that. And I look back foolishly on when I maybe thought differently about that. But it is, it is more about books. It's gathering spaces, it's meeting spaces. It's organizations using it for a space to, to get together because they've outgrown and they're growing and they need that space and that opportunity. You know, so again, I think people live busy lives, a hundred percent get that. I will say that since that four-year journey, the people in the crowd have gotten less. Doesn't mean there are people that care. I certainly know that. But I, I also think they, they see, they're seeing a vision of what it looked like. They're seeing the support. And again, so I'm, I'm super excited about the direction fully again. I will not take lightly in two weeks to, to say that, you know, I'm voting to, to, to raise a levy on someone and it's a cost that someone may or may not be able to afford. And I understand that. And that's, I'll never take that for granted. But I also am very proud of the services and the, the buildings that we're gonna provide for all members of this community.
Well said. Anybody else?
I will say, because unfortunately, I will not be present in two weeks for this, but to make my thoughts known, I think it's fair. I think it's equitable. I do echo a lot of the comments that Councilmember Grau has stated, and even everybody has stated up here. That this is a decision that we don't take lightly. And we do understand that there are people who live on a fixed income or paycheck to paycheck. And this could be a hard pill to swallow for some people. But I do think for the services they're getting, it's more than fair. And in fact, it makes it a better, makes Chaska one of the better, best places to live in the state of Minnesota, I think. And we are having to pay, play catch-up in a way. But I'm glad we're doing it now and not five years from now when it would cost possibly twice as much. And while we have this new growth from the commercial industrial, I think that's a great way to capitalize on, on that. And really just make Chaska the best small town in Minnesota. So I will, I would be voting for it as well. And again, I don't take that lightly either. But these are things that we need to have in order to maintain the level of service we've promised to our residents. And also to stay on the cutting edge as well. I think we're, we're heading in a lot of the right directions with what we're doing. So that's all I've got.
Awesome.
I would echo what both of my fellow council members said. It isn't a decision that we take lightly whenever we're talking about income and what people are gonna pay. But I think much like we talked about with the school board, you know, maybe a month ago now, good schools are a reflection of a good community. And so are good communities a reflection of the services they have. So, you know, we have to pay for those services. We have to keep those buildings up. We have so many great trails and parks in this fairly small city. If you think about square footage, we're not a big city. But you see people congregating all the time in our parks. You know, there's this new park coming that's gonna be amazing. New, all new facilities. It's just setting Chaska up to continue to thrive. And I think it's a sign when people are moving here so quickly and building permits are on the rise, that people are seeing that. So just like we encourage people to vote yes for schools and keep our schools strong. While it may not be the most appetizing thing to see your taxes go up and, you know, I, I a hundred percent agree with it. It's definitely something we need to do to keep our city thriving and beautiful. So.
Wonderful.
Yeah, this is always, like, this meeting, I don't take the fact that there's no one sitting here as a sign that everyone's happy about it. So I don't think that's true. We're not silly. But, um, you know, I do think that there's been a lot of effort put into kind of establishing the, the why behind the building program and, and the services we provide. And to me, I don't see, some people look at the Public Works Building, for instance, say, oh, that's a nice new shiny building. And, and I look at that building and I say, okay, we can finally really do right by our firefighters and do right by our police officers. Those people that run into emergencies first and that we take such great pride in. And then the same with Municipal Services Building, those plow drivers that get up at two AM and plow all that snow and, and making sure they, you know, can get into equipment and in a building that makes sense. And, and that, that's what I see is being able to provide those services that are so important in our community, that people rave about on Facebook and social media and to their friends and to their, you know, real estate people that make people wanna come live in this community. And so, you know, I, I don't think, see them as new shiny things. I see them as necessary things to make sure that people continue to love living here. So I think that's really important. But I also think I'm grateful that these decisions are made by your neighbors. We all live here and we all come from different backgrounds. And I say this every year, I think having representation that reflects our community is important. So for me, being a single income, and I live in a small house downtown Chaska, like, obviously Chaska downtown. And to know that I'm looking at my neighbors and saying, you know, there's the single mom two doors down or there's the senior on a fixed income down the block. And, and those are the taxes that are going up. And to keep that into perspective, even doing this for seven years and, and going through the building program for this many years, to keep that perspective. To keep that perspective of looking down the street and who you're impacting, and is it smart, does it make sense, are we doing it for the better? And so that's really what drives this for me, so. I'm sure we'll say more next week when we vote on it, but I think that, that perspective is important of where your neighbor's doing this. We all have day jobs, we all come from different backgrounds, we come sit here and help make the hard decisions with that vision for the community. Looking around corners, saying, where do we wanna be five years from now, are we still gonna be a community people wanna live in? How are we gonna get there? And making the hard decisions that people ultimately are gonna be really mean about on Facebook. But it's worth it at the end of the day, because we know we're doing better for the community and we're doing the smart thing for the community. So I think that's all my thoughts on it, I probably could keep going for two hours, but none of us need to sit here that long. I, no, I mean, um. You know, sitting in this chair in this different role, it's kind of, it's been listening to each one of your perspectives as a fellow counsel is really rewarding, um, because I feel like even though we, like you said, do come from different backgrounds, we have, you know, different lives. We collectively see a vision here and see the purpose and, and end goal of that vision. And I think that that really hits home to our desire to have a community that is for everyone. And that is, um, maintaining high-quality services, you know, oftentimes in my role, people say, you know, what is one thing that, you know, keeps you up at night or, you know, makes you stressed out or whatever? And I would say, you know, these decisions are the hardest decisions. I always want to ensure that Chaska stays both an affordable place to live and a community capable of delivering those high-quality services that people deserve. And when I think about, um, those services, like all of our council members had touched on, those are services that we don't think about every single day. You know, when you turn on the light switch, when you flush your toilet, when you run your tap water to fill a glass of water for your child or yourself. When you call nine-one-one, uh, you want that person to be down there quickly. And even like this weekend, having that fire, knowing that we have a Saturday duty crew during that time, that, those are minutes saved. While that garage structure was probably lost, they also rescued some animals out of that, and that's very meaningful to those homeowners. And if there were, you know, souls in there, they would be rescuing those souls, and that, those minutes matter. And that also containment of, of that fire matters. And that's one of the worst things that someone can ever experience in their whole entire life, and we want those services to be there for those people. And we want the dependability of all of those services so that you don't have to think about that, and that shouldn't be things that we have to think about. And so we're tasked with making sure that we carry those services forward and that they're the best that they can be. I'm excited that we are entering our fourth year of this building program, it has been a journey. It's been something, though, that as we sat together as a different, slightly different council many years ago. We knew that this was gonna be a difficult task, but it was a necessary task. And it wasn't gonna get any easier if we stretched out over a larger number of years, you know, as far as the cost of construction and inflation. And we knew that we needed to have these buildings be in the best that they can be to provide those services for our community. And we needed to do it now, we're still in a state of growth. At the beginning of the year, I got, I had a community member reach out to me, and I have community members reach out time to time, just sharing their thoughts and feelings over, you know, worry over the, worry over taxes, you know, if you lived in this community for longer than ten years, like, yeah, you've definitely seen a reflection of tax growth. And, and that is totally understandable, and so when people get worried like that, I appreciate that they reach out to me and that we are able to have that conversation. And that conversation stemmed, um, a lot of that discussion that we all have had about the why, um, with everything. But it also stemmed with, you know, he had kind of said, well, what are some of, if, you know, what are some of our efficiencies? Like, how are you guys as a city being more efficient? And so, you know, some of the things that I think, you know, are always worth mentioning is that, you know, by having those electric utility being involved, that helps contribute dollars back in and it helps offset the costs, you know, that our municipal service, uh, that are public works, that they do the mill and overlay on our trails and do the playground equipment, that helps save costs. You know, these are like little things that add up to big dollars over the stretch of our whole entire budget. And that those things are important, uh, to see as cost containment, you know, that we're not just spending dollars here and there willy-nilly. We're putting dedicated amounts of money into things that we know are going to make an impact and making sure that we're saving money when it's necessary. So those are kind of the main points that outside of kind of what was already said, that I really wanted to make sure got said. But I also like to reiterate as well that when we talk about this, I understand that we're asking people to pay more. And that when we're asking people to pay more, that's taking away from other areas of their household budget. Or it might be impacting them in a, in a negative facet financially. And that is one of the hardest decisions that I have to, you know, take on in this role. But that, but when we look at things, we look at the community as a whole and the intended purpose of the services and what they provide and the buildings and what they provide. These are important things that they, and they need to move forward, so. Okay. Do we have to do anything else with this?
No, that's it, like you said, no decisions tonight, decisions on the fifteenth, and there'll be decisions for everything, not just the general fund.
Okay, and, you know, to round off this conversation, I realized that this was the opportunity for a public hearing. I realized that, yeah, we didn't have anybody in the crowd, and that hasn't always been the case. And whether people are sitting here and they're coming up here and asking their questions, those are always really meaningful conversations. And I know it can be a very intimidating space to come here and stand before and be kind of on camera and on YouTube and all that sort of stuff. But if anybody ever has any questions, while they're, while this was the public dedicated hearing towards this, that doesn't mean that you can't reach out to any one of us and have this conversation. I would rather you have those conversations with one of us or with city staff or myself than, you know, maybe asking people on social media. I would just, let's have a conversation, so. Alright, alright, with that being said, and my computer, I have to dial back into it again, I'm gonna go off the paper agenda, and that moves us along to bills.
Yeah.
There should be a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Oh, I thought I closed it.
Yeah, we closed it at E fifteen.
You closed the public hearing, but the, the motion is ready, just, there's an option to continue the public hearing on the fifteenth if needed. So the RFA has been drafted to say we're concluding the public hearing process for truth in taxation and establishing December fifteenth for final action.
Okay, alright. So we are closing the public hearing. I can't get back into my computer.
Hold on, let me.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I can't find it. Um, I'll make a motion to close the Truth in Taxation public hearing and establish December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as the date to consider the adoption of the twenty twenty-six budget and final tax levy.
Alright, so we have a motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Shovlin, alright. Any other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries, alright, thank you Noel for addressing that. And the, and I, if I didn't say it before, then the, the public hearing closes at eight thirty-three. I thought I said it, but maybe I didn't.
You, you did, but I get what, what Noel's saying is to actually have the motion.
Yeah, you have to kind of put a motion forward to like, really, okay, alright. Alright, um, okay, now that moves us down to bills, does anybody have a question on a bill?
I have one question.
Okay.
It's on, um, page two or page one of the report, I guess it would technically be, for Ancom Communications. I think I've seen this before, but I can't remember what it's for, cellular system public, is that, what does that mean?
Councilmember Hatfield, that is for the new public safety facility, and that is some of the equipment that they are buying for, um, to put in their radios and, and other things that they need for that, um, uh, facility to be fully operational.
Got it, that makes sense, the next line does, for the radio system does say public safe, which makes more sense than, okay, great. Um, that was my only question.
Alright, anybody else have any questions on a, on a bill? Otherwise entertain a motion to approve the bills?
Motion.
Ooh, okay, let's do motion from Councilmember Gra with a second from Councilmember Shovlin. Alright, uh, roll call, please. Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Benish?
Yes.
Councilmember Shovlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Aye.
Mayor Hubbard?
Yes.
Alright, so that moves us along to other business, um, Councilmember Hatfield, pick it up.
Alright, where do I start? Went to the tree lighting, um, that's always fantastic. I don't know if we wanna consider this, whoever, anybody's ever said it, but I know we say it starts at six, so it makes sense that the tree gets lit at six. But I've heard people like running through the lobby of the, um, Curling Center being like, oh, they already turned it on. And I think just from an event standpoint, I don't know if we ever wanna like consider doing it like six oh five or six ten, the actual lighting, because you say the event starts at six. People get their car there at six and don't get to the tree lighting.
Or you can't.
It's kind of like why I send people, it's why I send people down, as a wedding planner, I send people down the aisle at, you know, if their ceremony's at four, I send them down the aisle at four oh five, because people don't get their butts in seats, it's just something to consider.
I think that's a very good feedback.
I did hear people like, oh, they already turned it on.
Well, I think with the other trees lit too, people probably get confused, you just make them all the dark over there.
That might be, that might be tough. I don't know if I can figure out how to flip five switches.
We're all standing there with the plug in.
Just strategically, like.
I was literally talking to Matt as he was like, I can't talk, I gotta plug this in.
Daisy chain all of the electric currents, you know, really.
We'd have a Clark Griswold fail.
Yeah, you know, it, it comes from, Shovlin was asking me a question, I'm like, no, 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 I can't miss this, I can't miss it.
I would've been like horrified, I think.
You would've been, I would've been just.
Mark from the background, like, it always worked for me.
I, I swear to God, that is the most stressful event of the entire year, is flipping that switch.
I've never seen him like, yeah, that stretched.
That's funny, um, but yeah, it was a fantastic event, I really loved Santa arriving at forty-one and coming in. That line to get pictures with Santa was long the whole night. We had to like eventually leave it, cuz, um, my niece had to get home and go to bed, and so, um, it was just like a fantastic event.
But it was fun to see the Grinch set the Santa line, the Grinch, people were.
I didn't even know the Grinch was there, totally missed it, I was in the Santa line.
He's over by the crooked pine, yeah.
Yeah, um, so that was a great event, and then of course, um, uh, Small Town, or Small Town, Small Business Saturday, um, happened. And so, great to see people down in the businesses, I, with the snowstorm, I think there were probably a little less people out. But it was still great to see people in the businesses, I saw a statistic, um, well, I guess let me back up. I also just wanna, you know, there was an announcement of a business in the community closing this weekend, or I think it was this weekend. And it really made me think like, you know, everyone, there were lots of comments about like what the city could do. And, and of course, we wanna foster a good city or a good business, um, environment. But as a business owner myself, I know that businesses really, they rely on, you've gotta, it's on the business to be successful and you wanna create a good environment. We try and do that here, but also it really made me think about, as I was shopping at some of the shops, like, if you wanna see a business stay in your community, go to that business and give it your money. And I saw a statistic somewhere that was like, if you spent sixty dollars less on Amazon or at Target or Costco or wherever, and you put that money into a small business, that would be billions of dollars into our small businesses, um, this Christmas season. So I want people to just walk away with that thinking, just in the spirit of Small Business Saturday, of if you really like having a business in your community, you really like a certain restaurant, or you really like a little, a small shop, or whatever it might be, and, you know, and the place you get your car detail, whatever small business it may be, if you like having that in your community, go spend your dollars there, and that's the best way to make sure a business stays in your community. So, um, it just made me think a lot about that as I was, um, downtown this weekend doing some shopping. Um, and we just are really lucky to have all the businesses in Chaska, both downtown and, um, throughout the rest of the city as well. So with Small Business Saturday, I just wanted to mention that. Um, and kind of along those lines, right now Downtown Chaska has their gifts with purchase at some of the shops, so I thought I'd bring them. Little cute little ornament and a fun little magnet for your fridge or bag clip.
Chip clip.
Chip clip, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and it says Historic Downtown Chaska, and this one has a picture of the gazebo, so here's my bag from Carver Junk and the cute little gifts. So, um, if you want those, I personally really like, uh, getting the ornaments every year and it's kind of fun to collect them. I like that the downtown businesses do that, so encourage everyone to get downtown and do that. And a great opportunity is this Saturday for Hometown Holiday. There'll be carriage rides led by the history tour, uh, History Center, there, the shops have specials, there are, there's usually smores, um, all sorts of things. So definitely go downtown for Hometown Holiday, I've seen a lot of holiday markets on the seventh, so, um, lots of different businesses having those holiday markets this weekend. I think it's a big, be, big good weekend to go spend your dollars downtown, or in any of the businesses, I shouldn't just say downtown, but the commons across the whole, um, city. So that's, that, um, Sippin Saturdays are still happening downtown, um, some other things coming up. December fifth, this Santa's at the Community Center, they have a couple of sessions, I think those spots will probably fill up. So, um, if you want some good affordable pictures of, with Santa, those are good ones. December seventeenth is the Santa Parade, so, uh, that's like literally one of my favorite days every year, is the Santa Parade. Which sounds silly, but I'm a five-year-old at heart, I think. And then some other things going on, um, you know, our fire department grew their mustaches this November. And I really think everyone should take a minute to go vote by December third at midnight.
Wait, I missed it, we vote?
Yes, go vote.
I missed that.
Go vote on whose mustache is best.
Oh, okay.
Um, and it's a lot of fun.
I'm gonna vote on Sparky's.
I got this in a month.
Congratulations.
Way to go, Matt.
So I think that's fun, so go support our fire department, go vote on who did it best, or just whoever you wanna vote for. And some other things, commission applications are, uh, due by December twelfth, so if you would like to join any of our commissions or boards, you can do those by the twelfth, the Human Rights Award nominate, um, you know, people or, um, organizations for the Human Rights Award by the ninth. So that's out there, um, and then of course, that'll be awarded at the MLK Breakfast, which is January nineteenth, which is insane to start talking about January of twenty twenty-six, but it's coming up quickly, so, and then the final thing I'll just end in, cuz I just talked for a long time, is thank you to our plow drivers. I was out and about on Saturday, like I mentioned, and I was like, yeah, the roads are fine to go to this other community, a couple communities over. And then I was quickly reminded that driving in Chaska during a snowstorm is much different than driving in other cities during a snowstorm, because our plow drivers are the best, and I will die on that hill every day of the week.
You know, I, I wanna add on to that, I was in Duluth this weekend, and I stayed in a place that was at the bottom of a hill. And they were putting on Facebook that they're gonna have all their streets plowed by noon. Nope, and I, it took me an hour to get my car up and out of there, I've never seen past eight AM.
Don't they pay for their plowing through their sales tax?
I have no idea, they must not pay enough.
With the hills, it's very hard to salt, and I mean, I would never wanna live there or Seattle cuz of that slope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, it made me appreciate waking up and, you know, seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, the streets being cleared. I mean, it, I think that is one of the things we take for granted so much in this town.
Yep, a hundred percent, our, yeah, our plow drivers are amazing.
And they had a fantastic video.
Oh, that's a fall down one.
Can't trust everyone.
Yeah, really crushing that, uh, social media game lately, so props to that team.
It was eye-catching video.
Yeah, that's all I had, though.
Wonderful report, um, Councilmember Benish, take it away.
Uh, yeah, I also just wanted to reiterate, I, my thanks for our city's plow drivers and everybody who works in public works. And they do an amazing job and it, don't take it for granted, like, I think a lot of people do, because they drive to places where maybe by the time their day is done, it looks the same, but it wouldn't look the same when you're leaving your house in the morning, so. And also, uh, about what Councilmember Hatfield stated about Small Business Saturday and the announcement of a small business closing in Chaska, I totally agree. If you wanna keep these businesses around, you have to spend your money there, and that's really all there is to it. I mean, I don't, I honestly, I saw the comments and I don't really think there's much the city could do, but the business itself. And if you look at national trends and statewide trends, um, it just, it, they got, you know, between a rock and a hard place. But if you really wanna contribute, you've got till the end of the month, there, I saw a post today that Trauma's, um, their merch is fifty percent off until it's gone, so. There, I saw a post today that Trum is, um, their merch is fifty percent off until it's gone. So, till the end of the month, if you want to contribute what you can to them to maybe go on to another venture. I know they've got the vineyard, um, but, you know, you gotta, you gotta spend your money if you want to keep businesses local, so. That's all I got.
Well said. Councilmember Shovlin?
I wanted to call out public safety. On the night of the tree lighting, uh, we were going home and there was a huge, I don't know what happened, but huge accident on the forty-one two twelve bridge. And one car was flipped over another car. Firefighters, paramedics, everybody was, it was a horrible accident. So while everybody was celebrating, and I'm sure Santa got dropped off fairly quickly for that truck to get back up there, um, it was really amazing to see city workers celebrating on one end and then doing what they are, you know, um, day job requires them on the other. So, just a huge shout out to those guys who may have left festivities to go help out up there. Um, and then otherwise, yeah, I think everything else I have has been said, so I can keep it short.
Um, I got the comments about the tree lighting, it's a fun event. Um, I think moving it up is a good choice, right? I think year one, it's kind of hard.
That was fabulous.
It was nice, right? It's kind of a balance of, like, I like a little, I mean, I, there's some pictures that popped up in my feed with, in front of the tree in your, in snow pants and hats and gloves and snow on the ground and.
I really like not having a jacket on.
No, but not, you know.
I was like saying.
There's, there's a balance. I think it's, it's certainly, uh, just fun. It's just fun to see people there. I thought the addition of the glow-in-the-dark cotton candy was cool, or the flashing light cotton candy was kind of neat. Thankfully, my kids steered away from that line. Uh, don't eat enough sugar, but lots of kids did. Thank, good, good job with those.
That poor mini donut guy was a single guy too. He was doing the donuts and the cash register, like, poor guy.
Those donuts were really good.
There is, uh, mini donuts is the singular smell that miles away, you can tell that, that mini donuts are being made, like, right. Um, and then, uh, just to touch on the commissioner, uh, applications, you know, I certainly think it's, uh, encourage people to apply and look. It's a really good, you know, first step in the government, right? I moved here eighteen years ago, uh, was looking for opportunities to get to know Chaska, uh, had a background through bond, or through summer, summer recreation jobs, or working on community fields and summer rec. So was on the park board for, I forget, actually, I think I termed out, I believe I termed out, I think that's all true. Um, but it really just got me the opportunity to just learn about the city to, to, in a, in a pretty low stressful, like, you, 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 that you think that maybe these are intimidating, park board certainly not, planning commission, eh, a little bit more work, that's a little bit more intimidating, but like, there's different levels of involvement. And, and so I just encourage people, because it really, I mean, if you look, a lot of us up here served through that, had experience. It's a good way. And I, I'll be flat on us, if I would not have been on that park board, I would not be sitting here today. I just wouldn't have had that interaction, I wouldn't have had that moment. Went to understand different things of the city. It just gave me a good opportunity and say like, hey, I kind of want to do that. And so, um, I hope like last year, we had really good candidates, and we had too many good candidates, and we had to say no to some. I hope that's the problem we have again. Um, it's a good problem to have, because it means people are engaged and want to be involved, their community. Uh, and so just really, just a shout out to, if you, for those who are thinking about it, do it. It's pretty fun, low commitment, generally speaking. Uh, and who knows, that someday you might be sitting up here as a result of it, so. Just a good opportunity. Santa Parade was touched on, uh, that will be a snowstorm, that's just the fate of the world.
Stop, don't say that.
Uh, so there.
Makes it more fun.
We're real, the local came with them all.
But it is a good, and there too, that, that event, I just, you look back and it's, it's one of those things where things that came out of COVID that were good, right? You know, you think about through that, which is, COVID and the word good don't go together at all. Uh, but there are things that we adapted to and learned through and, and, and kind of kept. The Chaska Cares is a good example, the Santa Parade is a good example. So just really positive things. And so I really encourage, uh, use the tracker, find that on social media, cause it, like, it's, it's a, an event. It goes a long time, four thirty till, what'd it say, till nine? Is that what it said?
It goes through every neighborhood, doesn't it?
Almost.
It attempts to, it attempts to, right? And so, uh, no one wants you to stand on the cold for two hours, wait for Santa to arrive, but you can time it right and know when they're coming in your neighborhood. Always, never too late to get on the good list. Never too late.
It is one of those like real life moments where you're like, Santa! Because you like all of a sudden hear the sire, at least for me, I hear the sirens. And I'm like, Santa! And you get to run outside. And again, five-year-old at heart, but your kids, I'm sure, will enjoy that too of like.
There's two things that I'll get my kids running out, is hearing Santa coming or the ice cream truck in my neighborhood.
Oh, yeah. There's two of them.
There's two of them, but they're in my neighborhood.
Every Sunday.
Windows are open, they're out, because, uh, they don't even have money with them at the time. They usually can call, yell back, I need money, but, uh, yes. Never too late to get on the good list, so, uh, that's what I have.
Great report. Even, are you Chaska resident?
I'm Victoria, isn't it?
Dang, okay. Cause we have youth positions at these commissions, but nonetheless. Um, okay, uh, Elise?
Nothing.
Nothing. Ashley? Kristoff?
Nothing, Steven.
Matt?
Nothing. Nothing.
Oh, okay. Alright, well, I'll round it out. Um, a couple things, the, Matt's Biweekly mentions that we were able to, uh, close on the Big Woods property for conservation. So I was joking that I felt like Matt and I were buying a house together, because we were signing like title paperwork, you know? Those are like things that you just don't think of in this role, and you're like, wow, this is kind of weird. But, um, but no, this is, is amazing, um, to have those grand dollars. So really thank the staff for all of their hard work and, um.
Ashley put in a ton of work.
Yeah, Ashley specifically making this happen. It's huge for our community, it's huge for the environment, huge for just the conservation of that amenity, so.
You know, one thing, maybe I will add something.
Oh, really?
Yes, so, um, I found that particularly satisfying to purchase that property for the city, to be able to preserve. Cause I've, uh, you know, I, when I was a kid, I read all the Little House books, I've read biographies on the Ingalls family and, and I felt like I've had this tie to the Big Woods, like, my entire life. And then to be able to go in and, you know, sign a document that's going to permanently preserve a part of our history in this state was really cool.
Yes.
I just, I just thought it was really cool.
It, it was, it was, it was fun and it was, you knew it was creating a big impact for future generations, so. Uh, uh, also in the Bioweekly, um, we have a new deputy police chief coming on, so he'll be sworn in, I believe, on Friday.
Yep, Friday at two.
Mike Tenek?
Tenek.
Tenek.
Tenek, Tenek.
Will be joining us.
Oh, Tenek?
Alright, well, I look forward to meeting him. I have not met, have not met him yet, so. Um, but yes, in the council chambers. So if any other council member is coming or planning to.
I'm thinking I'm gonna come.
Okay.
We'll just post it.
Okay, let's, let's do it up. So, um, yeah, so just wanted to call out and congratulate, um, congratulate him. Uh, look forward to meeting him and seeing, uh, him in the community. And then, uh, recap, yeah. Tree lighting was amazing. My son lived his dream being able to flip that switch, and then kind of fun seeing him on WCCO later on that night, so. I didn't really.
You know, did not just a, like, little piece. They did a long piece on our whole tree lighting ceremony.
Because it's the coolest.
Yeah, he was just like, oh, I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna do this. And I was kind of like, where's your camera? Like, where?
You know what, come to think of it, I didn't know that was happening, and you did sound a little nervous, so that makes sense now.
So.
You were on TV live, you were not live, but TV.
Yeah, he was like, he's kind of stalking the stage and he approached, and he was like, we're gonna do this. So, it was really fun to see on TV, so. Uh, I remember years ago when we went to one and he saw Mark's grandkids, and he was like, when do you, when, when, when do one of us get to do it? And I was like, you gotta be the mayor in order to do this. And he was like, oh, okay, big goals here. Um, so, uh, let's see. We, oh, one other thing that's in the Bioweekly, I know, but we were able to, so, so city staff, myself, and then Commissioner Anderson, and then some of the county staff, went around to, uh, five metro area libraries and kind of toured what the libraries looked at, some of the amenities that each library carried, and just their square footage, kind of looking at kind of the architectural elements and, and kind of, uh, how the layout is, you know, what we liked, what we didn't like, just to kind of start the vision process. Obviously, there'll be more input with the community and also us, and then, um, but we kind of wanted to kind of get that process started, so.
Did any of our librarians go with?
Uh, Jody did.
Okay.
So she was there, um, and.
She obviously knows her as well. Now, she's the director now, but was.
Yep, our, yeah, library, yep. Uh, and so I think, you know, as we walk through this process, this is good to start this now. This is gonna be kind of a nice, long journey that we have. And I think it's really good to be able to kind of see where things, you know, what we like, what we don't like, kind of kick it off. Um, and also kind of, you know, work with the county as far as what, you know, what's going to function well, um, from the agreement that we have in, in regards to the staffing and, and materials and everything that they propose. Or that they, they provide, so. I just wanted to mention that.
One thing, if I can mention, Mayor.
Yeah.
Too, is I know that, um, some of us, last year or the year before, I can't remember, sat down and, um, met with Kevin Spencer, Kevin Spencer?
Yeah.
That sounded wrong for a second.
Yeah, he's our branch manager.
Yeah, our branch manager here at Chaska to kind of like dream with him a little bit about what the library could look like. And so I'd encourage the new council members, if you have a minute, reach out to Kevin. It was, I think, probably one of the best forty-five minutes to an hour I spent in, in that year, because it just was good to hear, I think it was last year, about what the dreams, what could be for our library, right from someone that sits in our library every day. Um, and it was, it was enlightening and it was fun and it, but it was just really good too. And, um, you know, growing up in this library, you think, at least for me, I grew up in this library, so I knew a lot of, I thought I knew a lot about it, but getting to hear from Kevin, um, was really, was really interesting and going into this process. So I just encourage you, if you can, reach out to Kevin. I'm sure he'd be open to chatting with you.
Oh, yeah.
I'm certain. He would be, he would love that. So, it's time really well spent.
Yeah.
Especially going into this process.
Yeah, he's, he's got a really great vision. He, um, has kind of the points kind of articulated out of what he'd love to see, um, you know, but also just having a conversation for ideas, so, you're right.
Well, no, the other group is Friends of the Library, Judith.
Yeah.
I forgot, Jacobs or whatever lives next door to me. I can't, it's Connie Jacobs and Judith something, but anyway.
They're a very invested group.
Yes, they are so invested. And they're always telling me about things the library are doing, and book sales they're having, and, you know, collections they're doing. I never knew the library did that much, so.
Oh, yeah.
Finding people who are in the know about libraries and all the things they do other than books.
I know, I should, you know, Kevin does a really great job of putting together these little monthly newsletters. And as a friend of the library, I get them, you know, and we talk about all the programming, and I should really just bring them here so that we can see. Cause that, that is a really big touch point, because there is so much programming that happens at that library, so.
And a lot of, I mean, we still have very little kids in our house, and a lot of times my grandparents will just take them to the library to play or to hear storytime, or and hear all the things they do. It is quite amazing.
Yeah, yeah, yep, so. And then just lastly, um, next meeting, uh, is Monday, December, December fifteenth. Um, and you talked about hometown holidays, right?
Yeah, I talked about it.
Okay.
I don't know if I said the time or anything.
Well, I think the tree lighting is at s- five, five, five o'clock. Oh! And there's a coloring contest. And I think that, um, you can go on Facebook, on the Downtown Chaska's Facebook page. They have the coloring pages there. You should get your kids to do it, because they, I think, have had lower entries, just because we don't have a paper. So I'm, you know, spread the word, um, who knows, maybe all five of us should color a page.
I told them that they should have an adult.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Um, but, you know, it'd be really, really fun to get some entries. It's always really fun to see. But yeah, they have a coloring contest. And then the, the prizes, they get to light the gazebo?
That is the plan as of right now, we plan to light the gazebo. Details still to be worked out.
Details to be determined, but, um, and that is this upcoming Saturday, so five o'clock, which is the fifth, six?
Six.
The sixth, sorry. I don't have these dates in front of me. Alright, now moving along, last thing. Our next meeting is Monday, December fifteenth. No work session.
I don't think we will have anything for work session that night.
And that was where we set our budget officially, so. Okay, alright, that's it, uh.
No, we have mosquito control.
Oh, that's just a report. That, those, those are just.
Fun facts to know about, I mean, mosquito control.
No, I always find it.
No, I mean, it is fascinating. I like to look at the quarterly reports too, just.
I don't want to know how many of those damn things there are.
I like seeing where things sit. Um, alright, if no one has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, motion from Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Benish. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Guess what, we're adjourned. Thank you.